Good evening, Jack.
I am now unmuted. Good.
On muted, yeah.
I tried to get in touch with you. I couldn't get any numbers of anybody. And at some point, I would like telephone numbers if I got to call a member.
I emailed them to you this afternoon after your email this afternoon.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, there should be an email back to you around 2:00, 2:30, I think.
Okay, that's good.
Hello.
Hello.
Amy.
Jack got was first in line to get his haircut.
It's sort of noticeable. I was waiting for the comments. Like 95 days without a haircut.
Hey, do you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good. All right, what's up? What's up? Okay.
Good now.
Good. Hello, John. Hello, Marilyn. Hello, Jack. What's up?
Here we be. Hey, Lee.
Yep.
I'm still hoping to get your phone number.
I just went through this.
My email? I thought you wanted my email. Didn't doesn't everybody have each other's email?
I thought it changed.
I just got mine this afternoon.
Will you give me as much updated info as you want to give me?
All right, I'll do it later.
Well, you can tell me now. I'll write it down if you want, or you can send.
Or if you would like, I, if everyone is fine with it, I can send the email information that I sent Jack this afternoon.
Well, you already already you already sent something out to everybody last week or week before last. Yeah, but Marilyn, here's my number, area code 518.
All right, Lee, Lee. Yeah. We're we're live on Facebook or on YouTube. So I will, I.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will. I will share that information. I will distribute it. Don't worry about it. I.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
I really don't want the rest of the universe to know my number. You're right. Okay.
Thank you, Erin.
Precaution.
That was great.
Well, I worked for Mayor Corning for a dozen years and he put he had his phone number in the book and would get very upset when somebody said, well, I tried to call you, Mayor. I'm in the book. I was up until 11 o'clock. You never called.
You know, Jack, when the school down in the pastures burned.
Yes.
Was a bit like they were 1980, early 80s.
School 15, yep.
And I was at the State Federation Office then, and I ended up go having to go down to see the mayor. And I forgot who went with me, Steve Raish or Ann Smith. I don't remember who it was. We were trying to talk. We were trying to say, well, the Mansard burned off, but if we put a temporary roof on it, then the building will be there and somebody can restore it later on. And he kind of listened and then he said, "That building without its roof is like a man going out without his hat."
I don't know who you went with, but I've heard that quote from whoever the other person was there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, exact same quote. I knew you were going to say it.
How funny.
Like a man going out without his hat. And of course, Corning, that generation, they always wore a hat. I went through that before it was before it burned. And the it seemed like half of the material in it was on the Brady estate. It was the largest estate that we had ever handled in surrogates court. And it was had receipts for everything. It was walls of it filled. I assume what was left went down to the archives.
Well. Well, John, I think everybody is here.
Probably get started. This is a officially sanctioned or scheduled meeting of the Historic Resources Commission for the City of Albany. And if we have any visitors or guests signed in, there will be a time during the deliberations when we can take public comment and we would just request that the public comment be limited in duration to three minutes and address the topic at hand. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call. When I say your name, please indicate that you are here, although I can see you all, so it's not that much of a mystery. All right, I'll start with you, Lee Pinkney.
Yeah.
Jack McInnity.
Yeah.
Marilyn Kaplan.
Here.
And we have Amy Levine somewhere from the Law Department, although her her little image disappeared. We have.
Oh, and Chris Hacker is also here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see him.
I don't see anybody. I wish I could.
All right, when you speak, we can see you.
Okay. I'm here.
There you are. Hi, Chris.
Hello.
This evening, we're looking again at 25 Delaware Avenue. Conifer Development has provided additional information and more specificity on materials proposed for the project. And it is a public meeting. We are not taking making a decision at this meeting, so we do not need a quorum or five vote majority to make any decision. I would, and I think the the package that we received certainly contained a good deal of information. I would ask the applicant to proceed with describing what they have provided and their perspective on it, and then we will provide our input. So if you would proceed.
Yes, thank you. And thanks again to the commission for hearing us again. We were last here about a month ago where we presented a a pretty significant update to the original design that we submitted last year. We got some really good feedback from the commission. And we've been working through some updates to our plans and providing some additional information as as you indicated, specifically related to the materials of the new construction portion of the project as well as further detailing the scope of restoration to fire signal building. Just to let you know a little bit of where we are through generally in the site plan approval process. We are working with the planning board to through Seeker. We are going before them on Monday for them to declare themselves lead agency, and then we'll work through the seeker process with them and continue from there. So we appreciate the chance to get another concept review so that we can take all of your comments whenever when we make our resubmission to the planning board and ultimately when we come back before you for a certificate of appropriateness. So I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Matt to walk through some of the materials that we provided. Matt Duggan is our architect with the architectural team.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I do have one quick question for the board, for the commission. Last time we had gone through the kind of overview of the project, would you like me to do that again or just get cut to the chase what the new information is?
I think, you know, focusing on the work that you're doing on the old Signal Building, the status of any state historic preservation input that you've received and their review, and then I think going right to the the images and the materials. You don't have to, you know, describe everything all over again.
Okay. So I'm just generally here, the site is located right in the center here. Bound by Delaware Avenue, Moore Street, Lark Street, and Merle Ave. And that we can dump jump into the details. So on this next image, the couple of things that we did change from previously is mainly having to do with the ribbons that are in the new building. And we also are graphically showing the railings, the existing rail to propose to maintain on our signal building. We go in one further, we can get a little bit closer view at the new building. So you can see previously the gray bands that divide the various materials of the building. They were a more stark white. So we heard comments that they popped out a bit more than was desirable. So instead, we went with a more muted color that picks up the gray cast stone bands that are in the gable ends of the existing fire signal building. We go one further, I'll talk about another area we changed. There were also some comments about the front entrance of the building at the ground level. So you can see see here, we have simplified the glass pattern on the corner of the building here. So you can see underneath where it says 25 Delaware. You'll see that gray brick in that glass now has been a bit simplified from what we had before. This elevation, we also changed a bit. On Lark Street, we, the language of the what's now red and blue bays was a little different than the rest of the building. So we tried to have the building be more cohesive on all four sides. And so we still have the same bays that we had before, but now we've brought in more of the language that we have on the other four facades. And I can talk about that more as we go into the materials on the elevations. This side, again, you can see some of the tweaks we've made where the the ribbons that divide the various materials again are more muted in color. And again, that blue on the far right, that's very similar to what we had before, but the fourth floor treatment has been brought up as the same blue as below. Again, to work more with a cohesive language of the rest of the building, especially as it wraps onto Lark Street. So here is the space between the two buildings. So I'll get into it more. And I think if you do have the packet towards the back of the packet, there is some more images of what this link would be. It's envisioned to be a lightweight aluminum. I say lightweight is not truly light, but it's it's light in the sense that it's lightly touching the they're lightly connecting the two buildings. And the material materiality would be square with rounded edge aluminum columns and aluminum superstructure for that roof canopy. So here's now a view of the fire signal building that's been rendered with color. And if we go to the next image, now I'll get into the nuts and bolts of what we did with the restoration. So on the front of the building, there, I'll start right at the front door. Currently, there is a somewhat dilapidated existing Dutch style door, meaning the upper panels of this double door swing separately from the lower panel. So we're proposing to keep the same profiles of that existing door, but but rebuild it. So it'd still be a wood door with glazing, but it would be new material since the existing ones, you know, are not in the greatest of shape. And when we make that change, we would not keep the the Dutch door feature. It's a little hard to tell here since this is a 2D drawing, but that existing door is set back in an alcove about four feet from the face of the brick. The other thing that we're doing at this front stoop besides just general repairs to the existing stone, which is actually in pretty decent shape, is removing a nonhistoric railing that was installed in the center. And the existing railing would remain, it would have minor restoration essentially, you know, where there's paint that's coming off. It will remove the paints and repaints. The historic plaque, we remain on the building. We're calling for repointing, and I believe in your packet, you also have the specification that we're proposing to use for that work, which talks about how the repointing would be done and how we would be testing the existing mortar to make sure that we have an appropriate mortar that's not going to cause trouble to the brick when we do that replacement work. At the lower level, which on this floor, it's it's mainly subterranean, but you can see it where the larger, more the larger material, that is actually an existing parge coat or stucco over block. So we're our proposal, our proposal is to, and also in some cases painted with a black paint. So our proposal is to remove that black paint and restore that parge where it's deteriorated and keep this the the scorelines that exist. There's also some existing infilled openings on the base, which we're proposing to to maintain as infill, but instead of them being wood infill, they would be a continuation of that parge. And at the roof level, we will be removing the existing copper standing seam roof and replacing it in kind with a new copper standing seam roof. The gutters are also in rough shape, so we'll be replacing those gutters. They are an existing round gutter. So we'll be going back with the same size and profile. And there is one existing down spot on the whole building, which is on the right side of this image, and it doesn't quite make it to the ground. But we do have a clue as to what it's, we know what its profile is, so we'll be able to recreate that at the four, the former four down spot locations. And then there's an existing louver at the gable at the attic level. We'll be replacing that with a new louver. So we can move on to the next slide. So this is the west elevation. This is the elevation that previously had an addition attached to it. And this is the elevation that's facing the proposed new building. So here, the roof work is the same scope. The base is essentially the same scope, except instead of it being, you know, minor repairs and restoration, it's essentially a rebuild of that block and parge with the scorelines on it. We also are proposing to provide three doors, one of which at the central be a double door, which would be underneath that canopy. And we would also be proposing to have four louvers on this level as well. And then above, we're taking the same patterns. So in the center above, we'll be taking the same window pattern that is on the north and south cables and providing that here. And on the two ends or the two wings, if you will, we'll be having two windows, which again is mimicking what's happening on the east elevation. And the brick that would come back would be a brick to match the existing brick that's on the building.
So is this a major, is this a major entrance into the facility? You got one on that's on, it has the 25 Delaware Avenue sign over closer to that street, whatever that street is, Morris, I think.
Morris Street, yes.
So there's, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So the the major entrance into the residential building is where it has that canopy and it has the 25 Delaware sign. So through those doors would be the entrance into the residential building, and it also right adjacent to that would be the management and leasing office. Through these doors, this would be the clubhouse for the residential community. And there's also a dedicated space on the ground floor to be used as a community hall for, you know, the community at large. So people outside of the actual property would have the ability to enter in. And that's one of the reasons why we have three doors here. The door further to the left would be an ability to have a direct entrance directly into that space so that it'd be a good ability to to really use that fully functionally for community wide events.
Got you. Okay.
On the the Delaware Avenue front, there are what looks like basement and windows. And you're telling me what they would be would be just in indications and will be parched with a different color than the rest of the of the of the foundation.
We were proposing to use the same color, but set it back two inches so that, you know, there is a memory that it was there. It's unclear if the grading may have changed at some point through the life of the building, but these are currently built in openings. And so our proposal isn't to try to, you know, rework the grading to make sure that there isn't a water or snow issue with these openings.
Do you think that a slightly different color for the these indentations might help architecturally because they are directly underneath the the windows that are just above it?
Yeah, that that definitely seems like.
If it's all one color, it may look like a big, long basement. And if the niches that you're creating, even if they're only a couple of inches deep and have solid material, but the material would have a slight contrast in color, not not something dramatic. I think it would preserve the idea of the architect where you would have windows opposite one another with a an element of symmetry on each side and eventually above the the door.
Erin, can you go back and show us the photo of the east elevation on Delaware and also any historic photo of that if you've got?
Well, if we, if Matt would like to kind of finish what his presentation, we can do that or?
We can do it either way, Erin, because I've nearly finished the fire signal building.
All right.
So if you want to just dive into the fire signal building, you know, I'm happy to, you know, to do it that way as well.
Let me give me one second. Let me there towards the end, so.
That one, Marilyn? Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you. The up at the gable. Do we have any sense? Was that louvers? Does it look like, I don't know if you could, if you've been able to zoom in, Matt or Erin? Was that a window? Was it louvers? What was that? Shutters?
I don't know. I've never been able to find a straight on photo of this, so. I don't know.
Matt, have you found any photos of that of what that opening, what it was?
Yet not.
Do you need it for the louvers are to ventilate the attic?
That's correct.
And the other question I had, which doesn't show up here, but you would know from being on the building, is the the main entrance there is arched and are the existing doors square head or are they arched head? I understand they're set back.
I, they're they're square head.
And so whatever it is, we go back and look at those elevations, there's a couple of horizontal lines that are drawn. So what would that be? Showing to the opening, do the proposed doors completely fill the opening or? Let's see. Yeah.
So there is a transom above the existing doors, so we restoring that and then the square top door would sit right below that.
Okay.
So the arch would be maintained on the outside and then that recessed rear wall goes straight up to a flat ceiling in that alcove.
So the new doors match the existing in in height.
Correct.
And then there's a transom, which it's, you know, of course, can't make it out here, but there's an existing transom that then would be restored.
Correct.
And you said the doors are set back roughly four feet from the
From the face of the brick.
Of the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
You gave up the idea, the divided door. I assumed that's for reasons of cost and and efficiency and heating. I mean, the originally they had Dutch doors side by side and they would, it was a way of taking a typical Dutch item and putting it in there. And you said, well, we're going to do that. It's going to look the same, but they're going to be two tall doors next to each other. There won't be a split, horizontal split in what we traditionally think of as a Dutch Dutch door.
Correct.
I assume you had a reason for doing that.
The reason for it is is twofold. One is security and the other is, you know, a slightly better weather tight seal. Essentially, you're losing that, you know, whatever is five or six feet of additional weather stripping by not having that. You just have a similar at the head.
Four locks instead of two.
Yes.
I liked the way, and if I remember now, I've just gone blank. I'm just reading a message. It says, I see the picture. After download completes, run Zoom, et cetera, then entry meeting. I'm afraid to touch anything and have it all fall apart. But I did notice, and you mentioned that the directly behind the historic building, you've darkened the color of it. And you said the reason for darkening the color because it's the background for the historic building, that it made the ribbons that go along the particularly the gable ends make them stand out more because they're of a light lighter color and the striping, if you will, or ribbons work. And I think that was a good idea. I think it worked very well because it it makes you concentrate on it, whereas if you have something that sort of blends in too much, you you miss what was created with those lighter materials put to divide the different courses of the brick. I thought it was a good idea.
Hey, Matt, let me ask you. The on the east elevation, you have those basement openings. Historically, were they windows?
They were windows at one point, yes.
What's behind, what's what's what is the proposed activity behind that in that basement?
So on the north side, that would be a community room. The center portion is restrooms. And the cell section, which should be left on on the page here, is actually the stair. The communicates between the ground floor and the uh, and the second floor.
Have you considered putting windows back in?
We have considered it, but the grading has actually been modified, it appears. Um, especially on the um, on the south side, there actually wasn't loading dock built there at one point. And at that point, they went back and um, bricked in those openings. So it's something we've thought about, but it would involve kind of unearthing some of this foundation, which we're a little hesitant to do. We don't fully know what we're going to find. And um, also the way the vegetation is on the site, it's not something that's really going to provide much light into the space and it's not going to provide too much of a visual impact from the street. Um, we do have on the north elevation, we are showing, restoring those windows with the grade slopes down. And those are the two, that was two slides I hadn't gotten to. So this is the side, one back where we used to have a loading dock where it's very difficult with windows. And on this side, where we have more than natural slope, the proposal is to bring those windows back.
Yeah, okay.
Can we go back to a photo that shows what you just described in terms of the existing grade at the east elevation?
Hey Jan? I'm afraid to hit this.
No, touch this.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. So this is the Delaware Avenue side, you can see that um, that black painted area is where those recesses are. And you can see that there's not very much, essentially that recess goes down to grade. So if you were to put a window in, it would be either at the earth or, you know, in a few inches of grade.
What's the surface behind the paint?
It is a concrete stucco pudge and it has um, I believe it's like a twelve by twenty-four pattern to simulate stone.
Alright, okay. And your masonry infill, to be, until, uh, what are you using to install those window openings?
To be in, would be infilling with concrete block and then putting that same uh concrete pudge, so. So it had the same visual and that was potentially, we'll, we'll do it a slightly different color to provide contrast, as was suggested.
But that infill will be a smooth surface and not have the score lines, you know?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we go to the elevation drawing now, the proposed elevation? I'm sorry to have you jump around.
I have pictures again, by the way, thanks to my wife coming in.
Do you want the elevations or the renderings, Marilyn? Yeah, uh, no, that's good, this is good. So I guess the question is, I, I, you know, it wasn't until you, a couple of the commissioners asked questions about those windows at the lower level that I could, then it dawned on me what was troubling me about the foundation treatment. And uh, that's it, it was uh, Lee, I think you hit it. And then Jack, you were asking also about the recess and the color and the material. But um, I su- I guess the question is, assuming you'd want a minimum of kind of eight inches or whatever that might, you know, whatever you decide that might be. Uh, is it possible to get windows at those openings, even if it required the opening being shortened a minimum amount? And then we'd get some of that reveal uh that would follow down from the first floor and some of the detailing around the opening. And also you get nice, you get natural light in there. So I'm not sure what size those rectangles are now. But if you were to uh modify the masonry opening in order to get whatever you decided was the acceptable minimum height of the opening above grade, what size would the, you know, could, could that work? And uh, perhaps make kind of a not very significant change in the proportion of the window, of the opening, but get us the windows there? I guess that's a question.
The, the indication also gives you a chance to have shadows. Uh, if you go in a few inches deep, then there's shadows at different uh times of the day that lets you know that there's something there that was uh, an architectural feature below.
Understood, yeah, I was asking about the, the real depth that you would get with a window. I, I understand what you're saying, Jack, though, that there's the proposed.
Well, if you assumed it was the same depth as the real window that's above, might be an interesting comparison to make it uniform. Now, I don't know how many inches it goes in on the main floor. Be nice, it would, if it was the same, if they were three inches deep or four inches deep and had the same thing, that'd be a a uniformity to it.
Yeah, matching the setback, you also, you know, kind of pays deference to the history that there were windows down there at one point.
Well, I guess it wouldn't have to be that deep. Unless we have a picture of, which show us how deep they are. We have a, a picture of the front of the building, which would give us an idea of how deep the windows are set, or a setback.
Uh, I'll pull it up, Jack, the one where.
It's harder to tell, I know when you're looking straight on, but.
Can Matt, you can match the setback of the um, first floor windows?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, trying to get a picture of it. Okay. That's not excessive, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I think that's something we could certainly do, we could set the masonry back. You know, that dimension to match.
Since the existing is a wood infill, there may be some ghost or evidence on the, the jams of where the window originally sat.
True, yeah, some of them are wood infill and then on the, where we could get that good ghost and then there's some of them are bricked in, but presumably they'd all be the same.
Yeah. And also they have sills in this image.
I think this image is, it says it's from circa nineteen thirties.
Yeah.
Is there a proposal for the north e- e- elevation as well?
There is.
On that gable then? Or what, what's there now?
This is the elevation that's also facing Morris Avenue, Morris.
Street.
Morris Street. Merle Avenue and Morris Streets.
Well, they certainly have uh, window sills on that. Both above and below, there are all window sills. So maybe going back around to the front, some, some idea of a uh, of a window sill might be helpful. But you can see the difference right away by looking at the elevation. I can see where you'd have a problem. But it could be done through color or just the way the parching goes in.
I'd like to suggest that for all these elevations, uh, as many of us as possible, take a look at the uh, at the existing conditions with these proposals in mind and kind of come back and convene about the discussion of the treatment of infill or windows or sills or whatever that might be at the lower level.
Would agree to that.
Let's pick a time.
Oh, I don't know that we need to do it together, Lee.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be nice to see you, but.
Likewise.
Well, I, I just feel if you do it together, we can just um, you know, throw ideas right, right out there at the building, walk around the building as, as a group, you know, like we usually used to do when we made site inspection.
Make sure you don't have a quorum when you do it though. You can have two groups, I, unless it's done in a very public manner and advertised, you shouldn't have a quorum discussing a business in that manner.
Alright, that's fine, well, I really truly don't want to see any of you anyway, I can go by myself. To be honestly truthful with you, no, that's fine, that's fine, I, I can, we can all go at different times, that makes sense. I have um, one thing, I think the first time I saw this project, um, I don't, I don't, I may have seen it again, but um, I didn't see it the last time when we came. I don't know, I mean, you've been to the commission, Matt, several times. Um, the new addition has changed drastically in a positive direction. Um, the whole idea with additions is to not overpower the historic resource. And um, by um, reducing the height as much as you, as much as you did of the new building and um, the different colors, darker colors, it makes sense that you're letting that um, historic resource uh stand out. Uh, my only um, question is the northern end of the new building that is almost the same color as the historic building. I think that should be just a tad darker.
Okay.
Um, then it, it sort of clashes with the historic building. Your eye jumps to that corner. Um, and I think you may want, you may want your eye to jump to that corner because it's a major entrance. But I think the color could be just a tad darker so that it's not clashing with the historic building.
Yeah, compatible, but definitely different, not, not.
Yeah, I like, I like the yellow, I, I like how that, because that's the only part of the new building, that color. Um, and I can understand why, I think it should just be a little darker.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Otherwise, I think it's a very, it's, it's, you've, you've accomplished a lot, I think it looks great, I think it looks pretty good.
Uh, once again, now that I'm looking at it, there's no sills or the illusions of a sill on the basement level of the historic building. And above, of course, there is obviously the original sill. There might be some way to um, do the opposite of indenting it. Come out just a little bit to get uh, the idea of a sill.
I think these windows are proposed to be returned.
These are, these are real windows here, but again, there's no, there's no sill. And we started worrying about the uh, the, the blocked up ones and then we come around the corner. I think anytime you uh, put that opening, whether it's the illusion of a uh, of the opening or you've got the real thing, some kind of a sill should be there because the original had a sill. And, and the building or the floor above it also has sills on every building. So I think a sill should be considered or, or the illusion of a sill all along that basement level.
Yeah, I, I think they are, they are showing sills on the elevation, it just looks like that didn't transfer to the rendering.
Yeah, elevation does indicate sills, it doesn't, it isn't clear whether they're projected or whether they're score lines, but I would agree with Jack that they should be projected.
Projected sills.
To. I agree.
They probably really want it for waterproofing, I mean, the sills had a function. And if it's just some sort of a parage coat there, it's pretty vulnerable at the, at the non-sill locations. But we'll take a look at that, I'll, I'll take a look at it on site and I hope others will as well, all the, all the basement openings.
Are there any other questions on the um, historic building? Matt, do you want to just do a quick overview of some of the materials? Some, and some of the information we've provided on those for the new build?
Absolutely.
Yeah, every time I hear the term aluminum, I have this image of shiny aluminum. And uh, I'm sure that's not what you have in mind. So I assume it's going to be uh, paint that will be compatible.
So maybe if you go back one image. Um, so in terms of the materials, the, the entrance material is a stucco finish. And um, you can see the colors there, I think we'll, we'll definitely go back to the drawing board and see if we can tweak that color a little bit. We are showing two different finishes, uh, one being a more coarse, medium finish, which is the, the yellow color. And then the darker color between the windows is a, is a fine, smoother finish. The base is linear brick, which in the next image we'll get into some, some photos of examples. The maroon color is a Borden-Batten material, which is um, it's a composite material, which again, we'll get into a little more detail with some of these slides. And then the blue is a clapboard, which again is that same composite material. And then at the top, we are, we're showing aluminum, a mechanical screen where the air conditioning condensers for the units would be uh hidden behind those. So then here, this was just kind of a key as to where the brick is. So we're looking to do a combination of fifty percent of the charcoal color on the top and fifty percent of the obsidian color um, at the bottom. And yet it's a, it's a linear brick, so the dimensions are, um, it's a standard height of a brick or just about the standard height of a brick, but it's nearly twenty-four uh inches long. So the idea was at the base to keep the same idea of, of the masonry building adjacent to it, the fire signal building. But um, to do it in a little more contemporary way. And it's partially inspired by the horizontal lines of the other building adjacent to this part, uh, uh, of this part of our building, which is the school, which is currently the Boys and Girls Club, which is a decent example of a mid-century modern building. So that's some of the inspiration for going with the more linear Roman type of brick. Here's just some more images um, of that. We wouldn't be doing that in and out pattern, but it shows you the actual color. So that is the obsidian and the other image was the charcoal. So this will then be some images of that stucco. Uh, so there's the fine and the medium shown. So here are some images of the product we're using or proposing to use in the colors for the uh, the composite siding. So this photo is on a house, but you can see both the lap, the um, the lap siding and also the um, Borden-Batten. And here's some sections of what the composite material is. So you can see each lap siding piece is its own piece, it does have a snap piece where it's fastened through. And um, we'll be using both exposures. So there is a nearly seven inch exposure and a four and a half inch exposure. And here is a section on the upper right, you can see of the Borden-Batten.
Matt, can the side, the composite siding on?
Matt, can the composite siding, I noticed in the lap, it has the wood graining. Is it possible to get that in a smooth finish? Do you know?
My understanding is that this particular manufacturer doesn't have that, but there may be other manufacturers, you know, that essentially have the same composite product that may have a smooth.
It would be preferable if you could do a smooth finish.
So this is, we'll be using a PVC sheet for that eyebrow. It's a product that can be painted, so we'll be painting it that gray color that's shown in the renderings. This would be the roof screen for the mechanicals.
Sorry, now I'm stuck. Give me one second. Sorry.
This is the garage door. So it has, essentially it's a, not your typical garage door for a home, but it's, this is one of the top end garage doors for a commercial garage. And the slats are six inches tall, individual slab. And then the retaining walls you can see in the lower right, it would be, the VersaLock is the brand. And you can see the dimensions of it is 18 by 6. And then it has a cap piece. And then this is that aluminum covered wall. We've got a good illustrative image of what we're envisioning. And then some, some details showing how this works. These are not specific for our layout, because ours is a bit of an L shape, but this shows the system. And these elevations all have, have all the materials called out. I'm happy to go through it if you'd like. But you can also, you know, feel free to ask questions if you think that'd be a more time effective way.
Yeah, I think I just want to jump in and say, I think, I'm hopeful that by the time we come back for an official action by the commission, we can meet in person and provide physical samples to everyone. But for now, this is what we were able to override via the internet, so.
So this is the Lark Street elevation. You can see here we have a combination of the lap siding and the Borden-Batten. Within the, the three bays that are blue to the right, we do have a horizontal accent between the third and the fourth floors where we go with the tighter exposure of the lap siding and then run to trim bands. This is trying to be a little evocative of some of the elements on the fire signal building. And you can see the shadows here, but the blue pieces are forward and the reddish color is recessed back.
Okay. The exposed concrete for the garage is an architectural concrete? Or what was, which opposed finish treatment for that?
The post-finish treatment would be, it wouldn't be an architectural finish. It would be like a Denialondo or that level of finish, but it would be done with, you know, importance of craft. It would be though, it'd be putting up the formwork and then removing it. So you'd see the formwork and the fasteners for the formwork be exposed. But done in a regular, you know, not in a haphazard manner, done in a thoughtful way with the formwork.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there are reveals or something set in the formwork in the concrete.
Yeah, that's showing the, how, essentially showing all of the formwork, it's ghosted image on the building.
Yeah, the patterning of the formwork.
I don't think there's a correct way to say it, but that huge wall that you're holding it up on of poured concrete could benefit from a lot of ivy.
It could be nice.
It's very institutional. And I don't know what, you know, the cost is certainly, it certainly makes sense because you've got the garage under there and it holds up the building. But I don't know if I'd want to live across from them. It's more of a service street at that point for the neighbors because they face Myrtle and Morris or Will. And so it's a side street for their purposes. But that, that's a huge expanse of concrete, which is very institutional looking. And I don't know what the solution is to it. I certainly don't want to increase the cost on it. But somehow it, it's very, very industrial. Maybe if where the lines are, the vertical lines that separate the colors, maybe if there was an indentation that broke that up so that that line continued down to the level of the ground. So that what I'd be looking at here would be, say, five pieces of concrete instead of an enormous expanse of concrete. Does that make sense as a description?
It does, yes.
You know, something that would break it up and breaking it up into, all I can see is once you get to that small door, I'm not counting that corner of those two colors, but I don't know how many you've got in units before you get to the Myrtle Avenue side. But if there are five of them and the five have an identity that goes all the way down to the ground instead of stopping on top of, of that industrial thing, it may break it up a bit. And I think, for the, for it, I don't think it's a cost problem.
I think it can work visually to the benefit of the facade.
You mean as it is or if you put panels or breaks on it?
No, if you have, have a recessed line or even recessed the panels, like recessed the, the red, the maroon areas, recessed the panels right below it slightly.
Yeah.
It's an idea. Might be, might be a little costly. Add more to the cost, you know? But it would help in breaking up that long mass of concrete.
It looks like it belongs to another building and the other building was torn down. And then this one went on that foundation. And it was an industrial base that was turned into a residential. And that, that might help. I don't think it would be too expensive.
I lost, I lost track. What is the purpose of on the center two blue sections? I guess what you'd call between the third and the fourth floors, what's the purpose of those horizontal panels? There's not a balcony there, right?
Correct. It's, it's on the same plane.
Yeah, okay. I, I, okay. Yeah, I still find, I, I'm not following. It doesn't seem like anyone else is concerned. But I still don't follow.
I think it may get less tall.
If you squint, I don't think it makes it look tall. I was, I was going to say is I still don't follow the use of so many different materials and textures and colors. I, you know, we haven't talked a lot about that. We talked about the color, but there's sure, there sure are a lot of different things going on. And I'm not the designer, you know, I'm just looking at it. It's just a comment. I'm more, I really appreciate, Jack, your, your comments on just more careful detailing at the base to, to break that up. And I, as I said, I'll go look at the basement windows. I'm kind of yet troubled by those. But just a comment, and again, I don't know that anybody else is responding to the same thing I am, but it sure seems like a lot of different things going on. And I'm not quite, I don't quite understand what's achieved by it. And that horizontal panel is another, like, yeah. Another of those changes that I don't quite understand.
And I think, Matt, I won't necessarily speak for you, but I think that the, I think the intent of having the different colors and different materials is to break up the mass of the building so it doesn't feel as large as it actually is. So I think that was the, the design intent behind, behind that.
Yeah, and I think we can certainly look at, you know, pare it down a bit. I think that having the two different colors on this facade is helpful, but perhaps adding that horizontal panel at between the third and fourth floors is one too many things here. So we'll study that and see if maybe this is a better elevation with those panels eliminated.
Aaron, if you go to that slide just before this one, I think it shows the, the north elevation. I think there, having that band is really helpful to breaking up the building.
Yeah, if you go back one more, Aaron, for.
Give me one second.
It does wrap three elevations, not the entirety of the elevation, but does wrap a portion of the elevation on three sides with those bands. So you can.
The north or the south? The south elevation? This one?
Yeah, this one is, is a great one. So you can see here on the left of the image, you can see the beginning of that band and then that wraps along on Lark Street as well. So in three dimensions, it, it makes more sense, but it's certainly something we can study. Because on, on Lark Street, we do have three elements that are blue. So perhaps the corner element at Myrtle continues that, but the two elements in the middle there, maybe they don't have it and they are just the same exposure clapboard from levels one through four. So if you go back one, Aaron, the one we're just looking at, this is that facade we were just looking at in a perspective view. That Lark Street facade.
And although I wouldn't expect you to jump forward and say that the same treatment of the base here is what you want to take on for the, the long base that we were talking about, I, I think it's more successful here. We, it's really a base and it's not just a big, very, very long concrete mass. So it's got some texture and a different color and it kind of relates to the building above. So I, in contrast to what we were just talking about, just the very long concrete base without any articulation of sorts.
Switching back to another, another observation, on the north side, on the Morris Street side, we have used the elongated stones, which are about two feet long and skinny. And I wonder if you ever tried, personally, I, I don't like that kind of stone. But that's, you know, that's just personal taste. Did you ever try any others, more natural looking stone along there?
Actually, it's not a stone. It is a, it is a brick, a masonry product.
Oh, okay.
We certainly could look at other ideas, but the idea of the horizontals was, was one that the base is more of a horizontal element. And we were trying to pick up some of that more contemporary influence of the building across the street.
Of the building across, across the street rather than, rather than the Dutch historic building. And I believe they're both historic, but sometimes I think a more irregular type of treatment might make it friendlier and less institutional. And I assumed it was stone, obviously, as you point out, it's not. But it's pretty business-y and I wonder if it'd be, it might look better to have more of a, there's a lot of different kinds of things that look like stone now.
Aaron, are you able to look back to the images of that material?
You could consider, if you want to, you know, give a little more relief to it, the linear brick series with the random recessed units, you know, is one way to use the material, but give it a little more relief and shadow that would simulate natural stone, even though it is rigidly horizontal and brick. But if you go back to that image of the, the wall with the recesses.
I think it was ahead a couple of slides.
The west wall, John, are you talking about?
Going to be, it's a photo of the linear brick. So I think it was ahead one or two after.
This one?
This one right here.
Sorry.
Yeah, so this is showing a five-eighth recess. It, it does create a nice shadow line without really making a huge difference to the depth of the wall.
Did you ever look at a masonry block-like material or whatever that would be, that rather than this long elongated brick, instead was more akin to the proportions of what you've got, the scoring on the existing building?
Did not look at that, not yet at least.
You go back to the, maybe one of the elevations, the north elevation of the existing building? Because I think you see a lot of the scored material there.
A photo or?
No, the elevation, please. Just another thing to, that doesn't work. Yeah, those will work. Forward, keep going. Yeah, yeah.
North elevation?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, just another, another thought. Probably a tag to my wondering why there's so many different materials and different sizes and different textures and.
And if you did that, you wouldn't make the exact size. So it doesn't look like it's trying to be an imitation, but.
No, it doesn't need to, yeah.
It might look, it might be a warmer and less institutional look for a residential building.
Just something to think about, maybe.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't object to it. It's, but I think it might be an improvement. Jan?
So Erin, a question for you. I'll get over and I might just happen to be there when Lee's there, but who knows? But I'll get over and look at the basement windows, as we talked about a while ago. Should I send any comments to you, and then you could see if there's anything useful there to circulate, or?
I would say if any, yourself and then if any other members, do go out to the site. Please send me any of your comments or any information that you have, and I will compile everything together and then distribute that.
Okay.
Just one question. Jack had thrown out about the Lark Street concrete thing. He'd throw out ivy. Quanis Ivy would not be a bad idea. It's only, it's less than one-story height for most of it. It could be done with ivy on there, and it would be, make that a much softer look on Lark Street. Just a thought. I'm always thinking of landscaping as a
I will also put out, I know at one point, the Boys and Girls Club was looking to do murals. If that is, you know, is something, and it's a large span. The gallery downtown does have a pretty good Capitol Walls mural program as well.
As long as it doesn't detract from the elevation.
I'm talking about the light sheet elevation in the new building, and it wouldn't, we wouldn't use, I wouldn't propose to use it on the fire signal building. I think essentially you can't, you can't hide that with ivy. That's not appropriate, but new building to take away from the institutional look of that concrete platform, ivy would not be a bad idea, or some foundation plantings. Again, you can do it, put some landscaping on there, and actually soften that view very well. Because that's a new, it's a new view. It doesn't impact the historical view of the fire signal building. See, that looks like that elevation has landscaping on that front there. But you could get more vertical with it, a few vertical elements to make it up almost to the bottom of the floor above. Very, rather than a consistent, those sort of look like dense hues all the way along there, but again, it looks like it'd use some vertical sections in there to break it up.
Well, all in all, we've, I think you've come a long way with the project. As we said, the last time you visited, had dramatically addressed the number of the concerns that we had raised, and I'm pleased with the overall look of the building in terms of how it fits and responds and is sympathetic to its surroundings. And there have been a number of suggestions, observations made in this meeting. Hopefully, those provide a little bit of fodder for thought, and, you know, we certainly look forward to seeing the the project again, and we will, I think, individually, go down and look at the fire signal building and have some suggestions. Since this is the first time we're seeing any real details associated with the work on that building. And then that is still subject to review by the State Historic Preservation Office, as I understand it?
We have, we did submit the version of the plans that we last showed you to SHPO, and they did issue a no-impact letter. And they just wanted, in addition to issuing the no-impact, they just wanted to get some additional detail on our treatment of the interiors, which we haven't, we're not quite at that level of design yet, but we will follow up with SHPO once we get there.
Okay.
You're doing a great job. You really have. This is a very exciting project.
Very exciting.
Good to get the feedback, and we certainly appreciate all the time that all of you have spent giving it to us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate the time to actually doing this.
Well, I also thank you for being receptive, you know, to our suggestions and wanting to make this as good a project as possible.
We always think that when you have a lot of good minds involved in something, you get the best results.
Yep, yep.
All right. Is there anything else that anyone wants to observe or bring up?
No.
Erin, do we have any people signed into the meeting? Any public comment?
Let me see. And we didn't have anybody signed up, so I will give it a couple of minutes, and again, just say that if you would like to speak, if you could raise your hand, which should be, if you hover over your name.
If we'd like, I'm sorry, if we'd like what?
I'm saying if the attendees would like to speak, if they would raise their hand. I don't have anybody signed up to speak for this for this meeting, but I was just going to give it a couple of minutes. If not, I don't
Do we know how many people have been watching this?
Three.
Three.
Three, yeah. But we have one. We one. David, you have three minutes, and if you could, please keep your comments to this application.
Oh, Erin, I didn't have any comments in regards to this particular application. I didn't know if you were at the end of the formal agenda.
We can, we can take your comments in a second. We just need to wrap this up. All right, so.
All right, well, hearing none, I would say, you know, thank you again for listening to us and presenting the project and being responsive to our our queries and no, I think it looks good, and it's moving in a very positive direction. So we look forward to the next step.
Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Short drive to the meeting.
Yeah, very short drive.
And Michael and Matt, I will write up the disposition for this meeting with the comments and feedbacks and send that on to you.
Great.
All right.
Erin, when do you want the comments? When should we, should we go to the site as soon as possible?
If, yeah, if you want to go to the site as soon as possible and send them to me. I would say, I will send the meeting comments to Matt and Michael probably by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So if the commission would like to have comments to me, I would say if you could happen to be next Friday, and that way, if need, you know, I can send them another packet of comments outside of
Okay. Okay.
And as Michael said at the beginning of the meeting, this is going before the planning board for a determination of lead agency at their meeting next week. I believe on either the 22nd, or I think it's the 22nd.
Yeah, it's the 22nd.
And then we will, we can then sign off on the seeker consent on July 1st. So as long as
Good luck with your meeting next week.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you.
That's it?
There anything else?
Yes, for new business.
New business.
Start here.
Go ahead, Jack.
Regarding the elephant that's in the room on the on the Schuyler statue being moved to someplace else. I have some questions, and is Amy Levine still here?
Yes.
I think this is, and I have not spoken to anybody from the city on this, but I believe this is something that comes as an an executive edict on the part of the mayor to move the statue as soon as possible. If, is that an edict? There's also another executive emergency edict. It doesn't come through that form of government, or what?
The executive order?
Yeah, there's an executive edict was given, an executive order, right?
Yes, it was.
Right. Now, did she sign it five days later? Or 30 days later, depending on whether it's a regular executive order, or whether it's an executive emergency order?
I am not sure.
Because you have to keep re-signing it one way or the other.
I mean, most of the executive orders, I believe, are the 30-day ones. I'm not sure about this one in particular.
Okay, well, that's, that's all right. It's just a question asked right now. Has there been a public hearing regarding the moving of the statue?
No, there has not.
And under the landmark state law that we're in as city code, this is a designated landmark for City Hall. I'm assuming, maybe not, that this is also includes the the park and City Hall in the back and the circle in the front. And to me, that's on the National Register and the State Register, et cetera. And I know if anybody were to move that with federal or state money, that would, I think, would mandate a public hearing, but also has this been brought to the attention of state parks, to the Historic Preservation Division?
I have raised these issues within my department. And I believe that the appropriate persons have reached out to the state, but I can't say that for sure.
Okay. And does this go under seeker law?
Again, you know, I think, I think it depends. I've certainly raised some questions about whether or not the statute qualifies as a structure. And that would, that would affect how a lot of these regulations
Parks could give guidance there, one way or the other with it, I assume.
If it's not a structure, then I'm not sure that the historic or landmark laws would apply.
I think, but I'd have to look back. It falls under objects. Because the overview for review is not only structures, but it's objects within districts.
It's possible. I mean, there are a variety of different regulations and laws that could apply in this circumstance. And they all use different wording, you know? I mean, it's like the building code also has a separate definition of structure than what's in the USDA.
Yeah, I would also think, at one point, somebody was saying, well, we'll leave the foundation, which is quite a massive thing, and we'll just take the statue off. That would destroy the value of it. It was given by parts of three families of brewers, burers. And I think one of them is related to the Schuyler family. I know at least one member out of town. Schuyler has been trying to get in touch with the mayor and has been unable to do that. I can remember when the Presbyterian Church in South Troy was de-consecrated and was given to an arts agency. And the land revoked, reverted back to the original owners, who wound up getting either $50,000 or $100,000 in payments for the land because it no longer served the purpose that it had been given. And I wonder if we're subject to a lawsuit from the family that spent an awful lot of money on this. I'd like to know what the legal process is to involve the common council, the planning board, and above all, ourselves. Is this a moral or a legal obligation of the Historic Resources Board? Because it's, surely it's a reason, when I was the chair of this years ago in the Corning years, and Norman Rice before me, it was the Historic Sites Commission. And we weren't under the same law, and when we brought it up to date into what it is now, it was Historic Resources, which could be a much broader definition.
Jack, I can, I can speak to that. The rules and procedures for the HRC are, again, because this is a removal of an object or a structure within a locally designated historic district, because it does fall within the Lafayette Historic District, which is both local, state, and national register. Because it's an alteration or a removal of an object. It would require discussion, at least, with the HRC.
Well, today, we have a serious issue and three people tuned in. So I would hope that at some point, if we, if the people of Albany want this removed or put elsewhere, right now, there's other proposals people would like to have it in Schuylerville with the other Schuyler mansion up there. Another group wants to have it up at the of the grave of so many of the Schuylers. And obviously, others would rather have it stay where it is. But I think if we're going to have any kind of public dialogue, I mean, after all, these, these statues and monuments, they're a teaching moment. And we have people who are good, bad, and indifferent, like most human beings. And there's a teaching moment that goes on with this hero of the American Revolution, who probably with Tatius Cashusco was one of the two people that made it possible for the for the victory to protect Albany and and get all of Europe concerned, the French and the Spanish and the Dutch, to send in money, and in the case of the French, the troops. And that's why we're a free nation. And within less than 20 years, all of our northern states had at least started, if not had completely abolished slavery. The other thing is that the anti-slavery movement, the president of the anti-slavery movement of Association of New York State was Schuyler's Schuyler's son-in-law, Alexander Hamilton, wanting an end to slavery. And I'm sure many of the discusses, discussions, whether this was the right thing and when it would happen, took place here in Albany in the Schuyler Mansion. And Schuyler also, if you read the New York State relatively new encyclopedia, Schuyler is listed as one of the contributors of probably a half dozen people that contribute to it. So I think at this time of year, we should look at whether we're in phase three or phase four or whatever. There's no point doing this online, but at some point, when people can actually talk to each other and meet in a large area, maybe it would be our responsibility to hold a public hearings on it. Because I'm not sure who says what about, I know many people, veterans groups and patriotic groups and people who just loved all people who just loved Albany for all kinds of things, wanted to stay or has a strong feeling where it should go. But I'd like to know what everybody wants to do, particularly those who have been here.
So Jack, does that say that the first thing relative to the HRC is to find out if we have a responsibility or an opportunity under?
I think legal responsibility. I'm not sure which is which and I'm not trying to put anybody on the, you know, this is a, we have, we're not used to this. I'm sure we all have strong feelings one way or the other. But I think we need to find out what our responsibility is legally and morally, professionally. And I think when that happens and we know where we are, we should progress forward to get people's opinions on this. I've talked to people who had no idea of the anti-slavery movement and his son-in-law, with a lot of discussion in the Schuyler Mansion. And I would hope that people who knew what was going on and knew about the individuals would make a difference. After all, our, our revolutionary heroes did not invent slavery. They inherited it from their parents, their grandparents. They were supported from the society. And once we won Saratoga and once we drove out the British, then people began to say, we've only got half the freedom. And how long before we get all freedom for everyone? And if you didn't have Saratoga, who knows? It might have been a totally different course of things. Maybe somebody else would like to comment who probably toned in, tuned in and I don't know who they are. Say, I do know who David Dunzig is.
I mean, I will just say that I think, I think that there, there are questions about, you know, what is the appropriate process? You know, and, and does HRC have a role in the process? You know, and that, you know, whether, whether that should have occurred rather than just an executive order. You know, those are questions. And as I mentioned, I have brought them up within my department. And I mean, I think that's about as much as I can say at this point, but I will, I will certainly let everyone here know if I, you know, if I get a better answer to any of those questions.
Yeah, and certainly by our next meeting. When are we meeting, by the way? It's July, isn't it?
The next meeting is July 1st. And it'll be, I mean, we can discuss it again during.
Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could see each other someplace and do it?
Well.
Our control.
But yeah, we can, I mean, Amy and I have, you know, been in contact about this. So it is something that we can follow up about before the next meeting, so.
Yeah, certainly understanding what our obligations are, particularly as it relates to the historic review of something like this. And if you say it's the removal of an object or a, a building or structure that is under our purview, then I would think we would be remiss if we didn't have something to say. At least take, obviously take comment, so.
I will. David?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can hear you if you want to go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'll set my timer here. I know all of us are very busy in these days, but.
Can you lead in by giving us your credit from what you were in, what, 76 or whenever it was for the tricentennial?
Well, well, in fact, I, I predate even the tri. I started out in 76, in fact, on the New York State bicentennial barge as a colonial printer. So I can't say I knew Philip Schuyler, but let's just say I knew the name. But I was director of the Albany Tricentennial Commission, but also director of interpretation for a number of the recommendations in the New York State Capitol Restoration Master Plan, of which the crowning success, I would say, is the restoration of the three staircase skylights. It's truly changed the building. But I just want to second what Jack said. I think it's very important that a dialogue occur on this. I know amongst my colleagues in the museum field, we've already been discussing this, obviously. There are some very important considerations here. Black Lives Matter, the enslavement of the slaves themselves. But there, in the context of the times, I think it's important to realize Schuyler, as Jack mentioned, may have some experiences and contributions that should be considered in any sort of discussion about removing this statue. I, I'm sorry to see, I'm now up in Saratoga County, that it's become somewhat politicized with some elected officials in Saratoga County lobbying strongly for it. But I think certainly getting the input of the city historian, the director of Schuyler Mansion, folks at the Saratoga Battlefield. I think the New York State Military Museum, all of these folks, I would think would have some information to bear on this process because of, again, of the significance of Schuyler to our state and nation. So in, in any event, I just wanted to share that. I, I do think it is, merits more further discussion in this day of a lot of executive decisions being made and not necessarily the legislative side of it being perhaps paid as much attention to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? That is it?
Okay, if there aren't any other comments from the commission or any other business to attend to, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. That was quick.
My God, there's your, your face. That's the first I've seen you on this.
He's been there. He's been hiding in the corner there.
Jack, I really appreciate what you had to say and how you said it. It was really elegant. Thank you. And John as well, or David it was, yes.
No, it, it needed to be said and thank you for bringing it up. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning? Go eat dinner, whatever.
Great. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, y'all.
Good night.
Night.
See you at the fire station.